Sorry, I was muted. Here.
Okay, District Two.
Here.
And District Three.
Here.
And I'm here. Maybe not all there. Steve Notch?
Here.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance. We can do that in place here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Some changes with the agenda here. At 10:10, about 10:10, 10:15, no matter where we are in the agenda, we'll be taking a break. The Commissioner of Health is going to be coming on and will do a presentation to Renee Frondy. So wherever we are, we get to that point, we'll take a break. In addition, relative to the consent agenda, item number 13, the Holding Ford Safe Routes to School Project, that's out. So we won't be entertaining that. In addition, no pun intended, there's an addition that Randy Schreifel submitted waiving the penalty fee for seven commercial properties. And that'll be on, that's added to the consent agenda. And then the only other thing of any, of any possible change might be number five, the milk and honey thing. But I'm waiting relative to including or excluding number five. I'm looking for guidance from the old gust body.
Can I ask a question?
Got a question?
Yeah. Does Randy want to get clarified? Did he reach out to those seven people?
Yeah, a couple of them either reached out to us or we reached out to them. Generally, there was some confusion thinking that attention applied to them. Oh, and attention. So for seven properties out of the, you know, 160 that paid on time, cleaning up these last seven would be a wise thing to do. So some of these are distressed ones because of the pandemic. So I think just extending that to do 15 for those seven, I think would be helpful.
Thanks, I have to say.
Any other questions, clarifications? Well, if not...
I'll move to consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Pardon me?
On the consent agenda, I think I would like to pull number five.
Okay, all right. Okay, number five then would be removed from the consent agenda. Anything else that someone would like changed or removed? If not, can we approve the rest with those two changes to five and to 13?
I'll amend my motion.
I forgot your motion already. Help me.
Just move to approve the consent agenda.
All righty. All right. Short-term memory loss, that's a first sign. Well, I started out nuts, so I'm not losing anything. All right, and we have a second?
Second, Steve.
Thank you. That's Steve seconds it. Cheryl made the motion, Steve seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll do roll call. District One?
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
Aye, in my case, District Four, and Steve?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we're making progress in spite of ourselves. And the next item that we would be taking up would be the parks issue.
What about number five?
Well, number five, okay, you want to put that on a...
Should we do that during environmental?
What?
Environmental Services Theory discussed that one. It's the proper staff.
Okay.
They're not on right now.
Okay, relative to number five, Jeff, what's your wishes?
Well, in the past, we've had controversy and I've received phone calls and emails on both sides of this issue. And in the past, what we've done when there's controversy is we've set up our own, our own public hearing.
Okay, is that a motion?
That would be my motion, but do we wish to wait until Environmental Services is here or not?
Before address your client's stall. And usually, we do that when there's a split decision. In this condition, we had unanimously turned down by the township, unanimously turned down by the planning commission, and also, we have a good number of irritated residents there that were not aware of it coming in in the first place. Now they're stuck with what they have and they'd like to see if they could remedy the condition at the present time before they move forward. The planning commission approved everything except moving it from 300 people to 1,000 people. That's the only issue that's there.
Do we go on in this now or do we want to wait until Environmental Services is here?
All right, let's wait. Okay, Steve, have you got something?
Are you talking to Steve? Me?
Yeah, yeah.
I did have a couple, you know, I'm sure we all get a call. But actually, you know, one of them mentioned too, you know, they would rather, they're a few of our planning commission, you know, decided everything. And it's too hard to really have these conversations now with all this Skypeing and WebEx thing where you can't meet in person. You know, it's a, you know, my opinion was I'm okay with the planning commission's action because this could be brought up again at a future date to discuss, you know, if you show how to go to 900 or 1,000 per minute.
And I was in those, in plus, I got a lot of calls. They seemed, the neighbors had some issues with current safety on the road and noise, but seemed interested in the noise mitigation. And it would seem to make some sense to be trying that first. And then I, you know, Steve, you're saying with both with the way we're meeting, but also with the pandemic, it's highly unlikely they're going to be allowed to go that high anyways. I mean, I love it as a venue, but I think there's more work that could be done between the neighbors and they could come back in the future. So I'm okay with the planning commission.
One crisis at a time. Should we finish this discussion when Environmental Services is here? And we'll leave number five out of the approvals of the consent agenda for now? Let's, let's at least get that done so we can move on to parks.
We did approve the consent agenda except for this one.
Yep.
It seems like we might actually have support for the parks, the planning commission, but I don't mind waiting. But it seems like we just got some arm discussion.
All right, what's the wishes of the rest, the rest of you? Jeff, you seem to want to get more detail from Environmental Services. Steve, and we already know Joe's like to act on the current consent agenda. What do you, what's your choice?
Are you asking me?
I'll ask anybody that'll talk back.
We could probably spend a considerable amount of time. The basic question that comes down to those 1,000 people. And again, once we have the township, the planning opposition unanimously, the planning commission unanimously, and all of the neighbors, I think you should remedy those conditions. So I'll go ahead and I'll move item number five as is.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Can I second that with kind of the same comments? Because even some of the neighbors said they, they're not totally against it. They just feel like they have a little more in-person conversation.
The other thing that...
Everything's been approved except for the 900, so...
Well, the other thing that's come in my conversations with these people, they're willing to go keep down from the 100, but if it stays at 300, they cannot afford to build that and wouldn't be building that. And if they are building that, it would help mitigate their noise problems because it'll send it in a different direction. And they're willing to even negotiate down to 600 or somewhere around that area. 900 was a number that was put out there because it stays below the 1,000 where the RPGA gets involved. But so anyway, that's the issue is you're not going to build it if it stays at the 300.
They do have other noise mitigation they could do. And at least the calls I got, I'm sure I got all the ones you all got. I guess, you know, if we were talking, I hate to use in lawyerly terms, it's just not quite right yet. It's got some more work to do with the neighbors. And if they work out something with the neighbors to come back with a different number they've agreed on, they could come back with this. But for right now, but again, in a pandemic, it's unlikely they're going to get to. I mean, I hope for their sake they're going to be able to get to 300 eventually, but I'm not so even sure about that. I did go buy the property this weekend to understand kind of what the neighbors are seeing. But I think they need some more work on this before we even have a hearing. And I think, I think six public hearings at this point, it's been a lot. And we did keep an eye on this. So I think, again, I think we've got a motion and a second on the table perhaps we should just throw on.
I think that's a great idea. Win, lose, or draw. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, District One? District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four is me. I think that's a splendid idea. Let's see. Ben, are you available to walk us through this?
Yep, can everybody hear me?
Okay. I guess my, my, my only question is, is relative to... Are these like comp plans? What's the approximate shelf life of a, of a, of a master plan like this?
We have some of them that are anywhere from, you know, well, the Ford Park one is 20 years old. And that one's probably the 10 to 15 years of what the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission looks for for renewal if you're going to apply for...
Hmm.
But that doesn't mean it has to be.
Okay. The one, maybe trepidation or the one thing that I'm reluctant about with any of these studies and plans is I don't think we do the best job we could in asking, in thinking about the questions that we want answered when we order these studies. We sometimes operate under the naive notion that the studies will take care of everything. And that isn't always the case. Sometimes it, well, maybe that's a sign of a good study that raises more questions than it answers. But we should at least on the front end do a little better job of giving these studies some direction. Ben, what do you hope to see come out of this?
So today, I'm asking the board to accept the Great River Park Complex Master Plan. I do have failed with HKGI that she does have about a 20-minute presentation to provide.
Yep.
Ultimately, you know, out of this plan, it provides, you know, we have the input from those who participated and told us what they wanted to see with the park. It was really the public that, you know, that drove this plan. We did throw out ideas and stuff out there, but ultimately, between our stakeholders and our Phase One and Phase Two public input session, that, and then the one with the park commission, that's how the information that's in this master plan that we'll see here in a little bit.
Okay. Questions by board members?
Can we have the presentation first, please? I'm sure I'll have questions.
All right. Take it away, Ben.
All right. Yeah, so just a quick little back to the Stearns County and Fort Barris and Benton County gathered input on future park planning and plans for the Great River Park Complex. Counties worked with landscape architect and planning consultant HKGI. And with HKGI, we have Gabrielle Mindy with us today. And she is going to take over the control of the public input and the outcome.
Hey, goodbye to everyone. Can I hear you? Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Hopefully, you can see my screen of an image of the cover of the master plan for the Great River Park Complex. So this project, as Ben said, is a Stearns and Benton County partnership to create a master plan for the Great River Park Complex. That complex includes the Mississippi River County Park in Stearns County and Bend-in-the-River Regional Park in Benton County. And part of the purpose of this project is to display that there's a regional and compelling draw for this park. That's how it becomes part of the regional system and then it can receive legacy funding from the state. So some of the compelling features are that the state has over two miles of protected Mississippi River shoreline and views and preservation of natural resources for future generations. And I'd like to highlight that the preservation of natural resources within the Mississippi River corridor for future generations was identified by the public, the key stakeholders, and Stearns and Benton County Park Commissions as a key value for the future. Also, collaboration across the river between organizations who do programming in the parks was highlighted as valuable and important to this project in particular. It was mentioned especially that during this time of social distancing and uncertainty, wide-open natural spaces and parks are so important to our community's public health, recreation opportunities, and mental health. So that was part of our compelling draw, as well as the unique features at this park, which are the archery range, the disc golf course, miles of hiking trails, skiing trails, and the historic farmstead, which is in Benton County. And as I mentioned, the adjacent DNR WMA, which is in Benton County, adds to the larger corridor open space preservation. So this, the timeline is that we are finished with this plan today. We're planning, hoping to submit it to the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission to meet their funding cycle. So part of our process for this master plan was to meet the requirements of the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission. And the, the requirements are listed here in this bullet point list. Introduction and overview of the park and where it is. The proposer and implementing agency, so that's the two counties. There needs to be a description of the setting and the regional context and why it's important. Information about the site, features, what's there today. There needs to be a vision statement and a summary of the recreational trends and public values that impact and affect this park. There needs to be a statement of regional significance saying why this is important to the region and why it should be designated as a regional park. There needs to be a public input process that takes into account the values and needs of the public. There needs to be a development master plan. So we need to describe to the commission what we're planning to do for improvements in this park. There needs to be an ecological land resources plan, so evaluating the land cover, some of the challenges and issues and ongoing restoration projects in the park. Programming highlights partnerships with other agencies and nonprofit organizations, as well as self-guided programming within the park. There needs to be a statement on research. So the commission is interested in researching how regional parks are used and how they could be used differently or marketed in the future. And then the implementation, management, and sustainability plan shows how the owner of the park will take care of it in the future and where funding will come from. So the master plan does have eight sections, which follow the requirements that I just listed. There's seven chapters, and then eight is the appendices. There's four appendices, which include information for reference. So Bend-in-the-River Regional Park in Benton County did have a master plan completed in 2005. We exerted the historic preservation section, which has a lot of background information, and put that as an appendix in this plan. Benton County also has two DNR grants and stipulations that were used to purchase the land. In 2002, we included those. There is a detailed cost estimate in the appendix and then a detailed summary of all the public input and all the comments we received. So the first section is regional context, which includes an introduction of the park, the regional significant statement, some maps identifying where the park is. You can see it's pretty much right in the center of the state of Minnesota, related to state parks. There are no state parks in either Stearns or Benton County. So this is filling a gap in serving the public with a large natural open space, natural resource-based park. And then the, the map in the bottom right corner of my screen here shows that the Park, Great River Park Complex is located in the district that includes Stearns and Benton Counties in the center of the state. And then there are dots all over the state where existing regionally designated parks are. And then there's also a summary of background-related planning that impacts this park. You can see in this regional context map shows the, the two county boundaries and then other regional, regionally designated facilities. So the Lake Wobegon Trail, Sioux Lion Regional Trail, Recoray Trail, Beaver Island Trail, Corry Park, Kramer Lake Park, Rockville Park, or other regionally designated parks. So these are all parks that are in the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission database of regional parks that are eligible for legacy funding. And then you can see the closest state park, state parks are Lindbergh State Park to the north and Lake Mariah State Park to the south. This is an aerial of the site. You can see Mississippi River County Park on the west and Bend-in-the-River Regional Park on the east. And then this orange-yellow area shows the DNR's WMA and the river cuts between them. So the Great River Park Complex is identified as the areas outlined in green. The vision statement includes a statement that the park is envisioned as an example of multiple agencies working together. The county park commissions wanted to emphasize this collaboration, how it's very important and valuable as a model for the future for how to preserve treasured natural resources and provide unique regional recreation. We also have a summary of some of the public health values. So we received, like I said earlier, from our stakeholders and the public that, you know, they really value preservation of natural resources, especially people who live in the greater St. Cloud area. They like coming up to this park to have the hiking trails, the wide-open spaces, and the views of the river where you can't see any development for a ways. It's really special there. In our public input chapter, we have a summary of the input that we received. We reached out through press release, through social media, county websites, park commissioners, park commissioners reached out by word of mouth. We emailed people who are on the Stearns and Benton County Recreation List who receive newsletters. So there are many different methods we use to try to engage people on this project. We had two phases of input. All of our input was completed online due to the social distancing. I'll just highlight some of the input we received. On our first phase survey, we received 340 responses. We asked people how often they visit the park. Most of the responses were about once a year. So about a third were monthly around that. We asked people how the two parks could be linked to form this park complex. Over half of the respondents listed more river overlooks. So they like being able to get out to the edge and see across the river. Almost half identified that canoeing and kayaking, having rental equipment so that they can get out on the river, canoe or kayak over to the other side to visit the other park and then go back. That was of interest to a lot of people, as well as signage and interpretation and events throughout the year. We asked people what activities they currently engage in at the park. And by far, the highest was hiking. And then nature viewing was close behind. And then several other recreation activities, picnicking, photography, skiing, disc golf, were listed. We asked what improvements people would like to see at the park. More hiking trails was the highest response in, on both sides of the river. More native landscape restoration was also close behind that. So people really value those hiking trails and be able, being able to walk for miles in a natural setting. And then on our Phase Two survey, we had 67 responses and we asked about priorities. So at this point, we had a conceptual idea of recommendations. And the highest priorities were really related to natural resources. People wanted, you know, expanding natural resource restoration projects, property acquisition to expand the park as opportunities arise. Those were listed as high priorities. And then also, an idea was suggested with the city of Sartell as a partner to develop a bike loop that connects the city of Sartell and also up to Rice and the two parks incorporating the MRT, Mississippi River Trail Bike Route. So that was, over half of people listed that as a high priority for the future. And we also got several write-in comments about what people were interested in. There's a wide range of diverse opinions. Some people more interested in recreational facilities like nature play for their kids. Some people much more interested in leaving the park as natural as possible and expanding the park as opportunities arise. Chapter Four is the Development Master Plan. We have a summary of the existing features in the park. We have several images and lists of what's there today. You can see on the right here, there's this map where we identify where that potential 24-mile bike loop incorporating the MRT and Sartell and Rice could potentially be incorporated. We didn't identify if this would be an off-road or on-road trail. However, there was input from both park commissions that an off-road trail is needed for safety. So that would be a future project to determine how that would be implemented. Some of the existing features in the park, you can see in Mississippi River County Park, it's more developed than Bend-in-the-River. There's the archery range, disc golf course, a couple picnic areas, the group campsite and canoe and bike campsite, and then the boat launch. In Bend-in-the-River Regional Park, most of the development is on the west side of the park along the river. There's some overlooks, a couple parking areas, the historic farmstead restroom building. On the east side of the park, there are several pine rows and old ag fields that have been transferred to prairie and a few trails. But there's definitely interest in more trails in this area of the park. So the concept master plan is a high-level plan that identifies what improvements we're recommending. And then there are detailed... And then there are detailed pages that identify descriptions of how those improvements could be designed. So this graphic shows the improvements that we're recommending. In Mississippi River County Park, there's a parcel to the north that has been identified for potential acquisition. And some of the facilities recommended, if this parcel is acquired are more trails to respond to the the public's desire for more hiking trails. Some river overlooks also responding to that desire from the public. Expanding the archery range, there's a strong collaboration with the Great River Archery Center. So they would in partnership with Stearns County develop a 3D archery range that would go up into that site. Some other improvements include disc golf improvements, boat launch improvements. Adding a paddle share station, that would be potentially an outside vendor situation where kayaks could be rented similar to like a bike share where you. Enter your credit card information, get all the equipment. Get in the kayak for a few hours and then return it back to the same spot. There's consideration of boardwalk trails in the floodplain area where there is a lot of flooding in the spring and summer. More restoration projects, some of those are ongoing. And then in Bend in the River Regional Park, there's dashed lines identifying where potential future soft surface trails could be incorporated into the east side of the park. There's a new day use area, which is a carryover from the previous master plan, which identifies picnic play area, parking in the south part of the park. And then a high priority from the Benton County Park Commission was to add a picnic shelter near the historic farmstead. Where they have recently added a restroom building, so serving the needs of events, rental facility for outdoor events. And then you can see the dash line on Highway 55 and County Road One that identifies where that. Bike loop route could be incorporated with a potential trailhead for bikers in the park. In chapter five, there's a summary of ecology, the existing landscape. There's data from the DNR, which is the Minnesota Land Cover Classification System. It shows that within the park complex, there really is a diverse set of Minnesota native ecosystems. So it's a great place for environmental education to see different types of. Environment with the floodplain, the upland, prairie, oak savanna, woodland and river shoreline. There's also some information about challenges such as buckthorn, zebra mussels in the river. Things that should be identified and managed so that they don't take over the the natural areas of the park. There's also a summary of some of the geologic history and animal life in the park. Chapter six is programming and there's a summary of self-guided programming, hiking, you know, is the biggest use of the park and so. That is typically self-guided, although there are some group hiking tours. There's picnicking facilities, the disc golf course, archery course. There's interpretation at the historic farmstead today. Play equipment, boating, fishing. And then in the winter, there's cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, fat tire biking, winter walking and nature viewing. For group programs and events, there are several organizations that currently partner with Stearns County to utilize the park for. Outdoor camps, youth environmental education. Fun runs, cross-country meets have been held at Bend in the River Regional Park before, cross-country events, archery, disc golf events. And then there's also a statement on research initiatives to say that. The counties will participate with the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission to try to captivate how the park is used and how it could be used in the future. The implementation plan identifies phasing, we've identified short, mid and long-term projects with no associated timeframe. So short could be as an example, three to in the next three to six years. However, the plan is flexible so that as opportunities arise, projects may shift between these timeframes. This phasing was I was. Developed based on the input that we received from the public and the park commissioners. So some of those short-term items are where there are opportunities currently that these projects could be completed in the next few years or immediately. And they may be more important or less effort than mid or long-term items. So long-term items are identified as maybe higher dollar items or items that need more planning before they can be completed. There's also a summary of operations and maintenance, each county will take care of the area within their county boundary. There will be continued communication between the counties. So that as projects are completed, the counties are aware and can provide input on how those are completed. So this is. Showing the cost estimate for the projects that have been identified within Stearns County. So overall, all the projects that were recommended is a little over $7 million for short, mid and long term. There are a few items that are listed as to be determined, just because there wasn't enough information. To say exactly how much that might cost. One example is that bike loop route between the cities of Sartell and Rice and the two parks. We've identified 15,000 for the trailhead, but the trail itself is to be determined because it may be on-road, it may be off-road on the show. Or maybe a shoulder on-road trail or maybe an off-road trail. And there are several partners involved, so that's an example of a cost that is to be determined. Within Stearns County, a little over $5 million is. The total of projects that have been identified within Benton County, a little over 2 million. The high priority, short-term total is 3 million, which includes property acquisition, which is the largest number in there for 2 million, that's a conservative estimate. There will, if that. Property acquisition is pursued and appraisal will need to be done, so that number may come down. There's also in the short-term archery building and archery 3D range improvements, those numbers are. In italics and red because those are assumed to be paid for by the Great River Archery Center and donated to the county. So that needs to be determined through that partnership. Disc golf tee boxes have been identified as short-term priority. The kayak canoe rental station, paddle share station. And campsite improvements to the canoeing campsite and then oak savanna restoration and that that money is actually already. Part of a partner, ongoing partnership with the Soham Water Conservation District. And then this diagram identifies in green where those short-term projects are located, so you can see that the archery is highlighted. Oak savanna restoration in the south part of Mississippi River County Park. Campsite improvements, paddle share station, property acquisition. Trails in Bend in the River Regional Park were identified as short-term priority and then improvements to. The canoe landing on that side of the river, which is a little overgrown at this point today, so needs a little just upkeep. So with that, I will open it up to discussion and any questions that you have for me, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Gay.
All right, I interrupted somebody.
If no one has any questions, then I do have some, some points to make here. I did call Ben this week and talk to him about this, back when Pete Teisman was the parks director. This topic came up and if you look at the map, there is and and there was a. A proposal that said forward there, is this is really, a lot of this is prime development area. And it would provide a lot of extra taxes and and mitigate a little bit of the burden. If we put that whole thing into parks again, now it's forever more upkeep and a less people. That have to contribute for a greater cost. And when Pete Teisman was the parks director, the proposal was if you look at the map, there's a section that's. A little triangular section that runs quite a ways along the Mississippi River and it's currently all trees. And and the proposal then was to purchase that section. And add it to the to the park and then also acquire a small. Section a little further behind the where the archery range is, to give a little buffer there. And and so that was kind of a. I would go along with that as kind of a compromise here and and still then that other part could be developed and. At least offset the extra costs. And and for right now, the way things are with with people out in the private sector. Who are almost 100% carrying the financial burden of what's going on. I I don't think it's prudent to be. Proposing this, especially that whole land track.
Yeah, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, if I could respond, just. Commissioner Mergan, we did have that discussion within the park commission about possibly, you know, just pursuing that 30-ish acre. The south side of that parcel and at at that time it was decided by the commission recommended that, you know, maybe we do look at incorporating that whole chunk. Just because of the preservation value that it's that it has with the two miles on the west side of the river. And there's already two miles preserved on the on the east side of the river. Ultimately, that was the recommendation put forth, that doesn't mean it can't change, but that's why it was included in the master plan.
And then as I understand it, for any of this to move forward, this has to come back to the board anyway, so. We get another cut at the apple. As I understand this plan and I asked the question early on, what's the shelf life of the plan? At this. The reason we do these plans is it gives us a guide and appreciation for the possibilities. Doesn't mean we have to do them, but it doesn't hurt to have a record that. Some of this stuff was studied and considered, even if we don't do it, so. That's where we're at this time and the current action that we'll be looking for would be to accept the. The plan.
Yeah, that good. The second, I mean, you're exactly right, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. The reason for this is to establish a plan that we can do in the future, but the second reason is that we will then submit this right away to the. Regional commission and if they approve it, then then this park and the park across the river will be eligible for legacy funding as well. Right now, this park is not, does not qualify for legacy funding.
Any other questions or comments or concern?
Let me weigh in first, Lee, first of all, Gabrielle, I want to thank you for your presentation. I think you folks did a nice job, I like the graphic, I like the layout, I like. Way that you got input from the community, I thought it was well done, so thank you very much. Also, just looking on our screen. You can look the where the railing is, that's a view from the Socrates or Benton County side and you look well beyond that island. Again, if we are going to move forward with the purchase of that property, we're not buying that today. I think what we're doing is we're looking at the possibility of purchasing it, but once it's gone, it's gone. And this is not just a purchase for Stearns County. This is a purchase, I think, for central Minnesota, I think it's a purchase for the state of Minnesota and actually for the nation. You're going to have two miles of undisturbed shoreline. That's going to be there for generations and 100 years from now, after they're gone, they won't even care who who bought it. But they're going to see that, people in canoes, people on jet skis, people on 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 pontoons. And water skiers and they can say, wow, what a vision, you know. And and we can talk other issues about it, but but first of all, let's okay the plan and I I'm not wanting the county to write the check. We're going to look for outside monies because it's again, it's bigger than us as far as making this commitment. Yes, that's a motion to approve the plan.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second.
I'll second. Mark.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, just any idea how many people participated in the survey, maybe you said, but I didn't hear it.
Yeah, the first survey, there were 340, we also had an online interactive mapping input, which allows comments, we had 25 comments. But we track visits to that site, there were over 600 visits to that site. And then people can also like and dislike comments, so there were tens, tens more likes and dislikes. We had stakeholder meeting with 11 people, the second survey was 67. People are not allowed to take the survey more than once on their computers, so, you know, individual total responses. For 500, I'd say.
How was, how was the survey advertised?
There was a press release, there was. Social media presence, it was on the county's website, both county's websites, the park commission. Submitted to their networks. Ben or the other.
Yeah, so we did about 150 direct mailings to people who live around. Well, and then also land picked it up and a couple other new entities, so it's. All pretty, pretty well dispersed, I think.
And then maybe this was getting ahead of myself, but was there a estimate of annual maintenance costs?
Yes, so currently both parks, we spend, I mean, on Stern specifically, about 30,000 a year is what we're spending in staff and maintenance out in Mississippi. Bend in the river is about 20, so about 50 annually estimated in the next, you know, with some of these developments that would potentially bump up to 75,000.
Would you, would part of this plan be like quarry park where you charge a fee?
That was not part of this plan, the the only fee that was recommended would be for the rental of the kayak or canoes, which would hopefully be outsourced through a different entity.
Okay.
Something that would be considered, I'm sorry.
And we, we got a motion second, I believe.
I I have another question. When you did this, when you did this survey, can you tell me where the people that took the survey, where their residence is located? I mean, how many, how many came, how many people that took the survey came from western Stearns County?
We did have quite a range, I don't have that information in front of me right now, but there was, I think, about 30% from the St. Cloud, Greater St. Cloud area. And then the rest were from a much wider range, I think there are quite a few from Wright County and other rural areas. But I don't know exactly.
Yeah, I think they're high chance that you have in that master plan.
Yeah. Okay, so about, yeah, about a third from St. Cloud. Stock Rapids, Sartell and Rice were pretty high and then a quarter from other areas. You can see Annandale, Rockville, St. Joseph, St. Augusta, Wake Park were identified as well as other communities.
Any other questions? Concerns, clarifications, if not, can we vote?
Would be good, I I hope you don't mind, Mr. Chair, just one more sentence, I think your point earlier about this will be coming back to us for a vote and perhaps even. As part of with any land acquisition. I guess going back to Steve's question, it may even be something that staff is looking at, if there's another revenue. Related opportunity for maintenance, but that seems like that's a bit further down the road.
Okay, any other comments, questions, clarifications?
Just Ben and I had talked in the. Park Board had talked, basically the understanding is that though we're going to make this joint agreement, but the agreement will be pretty much that. We'll take care of our side of the river and Benton County will take care of their side of the river. So as far as it's going to allow us to apply for some state funding and and other resources. But but basically we're we're going to be concerned about our side of the river, the Stearns County side.
Anything else someone wants to offer? If not, are we prepared to vote? If not, are we prepared to vote? Okay, uh, uh, District One?
Aye.
And District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four? Oh, that's me. Uh, yeah, I, District Five?
Aye.
All right. All right, motion passes. Uh, thank you, Ben, uh, thank you, Gabby, uh, uh. We got a plan. Uh, if we have money, we can look smart. And if we don't get money, we won't look so smart. Uh, I guess moving on, we can do now on environmental services. Shelley, uh, at some point, uh, this, this part of the agenda will probably be interrupted to, uh, uh, take the presentation up with, uh, uh, for Renee Frondes. But at this point, let's see how far we can get into the environmental services. Take it away, Angie.
Morning Commissioners, Angie Berg, Environmental Services. Uh, the purpose of us talking to you today about solar is, uh, at the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission did recommend to the commissioners to consider appointing a work group, um, to study solar issues. Uh, if you remember back on May 5th, we had a discussion related to solar. And at that time, the board determined not to seek a moratorium or changes to the ordinance, uh, at that time. And then subsequently, the planning commission recommended, uh, the board consider a work group. So as outlined in your, in your packet, starting on packet page 354, um, these are the issues that the planning commission's been kind of grappling with for the last six to nine months, uh, related to the type of financial guarantee. Um, we've, we've, we've worked with the attorney's office. Chad May and I have, um, we're nearly completed on changing the letter of credit standard. We've, um, buttoned up the cash escrow standard and we feel confident that we've met that, that requirement. Uh, the second concern is related to, um, decommissioning. And I, and that, that word or that concern, I think, is very broad. I think it's, do we, are we collecting enough money? And I think the answer is, over the course of the last two months, we're collecting, um, more than we had. And that is a direct result of some of the decommissioning plans that have come. So I think we're, we're in, we're where we need to be for financial assurance amounts. It's not factoring in salvaged value or recycled value. So that's kind of the, we're, we're collecting the worst case scenario and we're collecting it in a, in a secured fashion. Um, thirdly, you know, we talked about what happens if financial guarantee when entities transfer. Um, again, we, we have information in the financial guarantee to ensure that the money doesn't just disappear. Um, number four, we talked about the statewide county comparison of solar farms. And Shelley and I were chatting this morning. I think that this is, here in lies where the planning commission has concerns. I think their first concern is with decommissioning. Um, and the second concern is, are we seeing too many solar farms in Stearns County? And if we are, what does that mean in the future for decommissioning? Um, so I've attached the, you know, the comparison to other counties that was included as well. Uh, and then it finally is determine why areas of the state are seeing more. So why is Stern seeing more? Um, I think Commissioner Notch kind of touched on this on May 5th. We're seeing a lot, but as we compared to, you know, Benton and Sherburne County, for example, their land area is smaller. Um, so if we did a comparison, um, we, we may not be seeing more than our surrounding counties. Um, the reason we're seeing, the reason Sterns is seeing a lot in this general region is seeing a lot of solar requests. It's, we're primarily in the cell service territory and that's where the state is mandated green energy go. And then secondly is that the solar farms are going to go where there's access, where there's connection and capability on, in the transmission services. So that's, that's the why. Um, if, you know, it, for purposes of today, I think that we would be looking for the, the board to make a decision on, on appointing a work group or not appointing a work group. What I would say is, is it's, it's evolving. Um, I just actually emailed the commissioners as we were sitting here and email that I got from MPCA. And it relates to the statewide solar paneling recycling work group. So this issue is being studied currently and I am participating in these meetings. Um, so, so we're aware of the different options that they're looking at. Um, the MPC and other statewide groups are looking for input from the public. I did send it to the commissioners, I did send it to the planning commission. Um, so it's a very evolving, um, situation in terms of decommissioning. There's options related to product stewardship. There's options related to rate payer funded models. There's options related to the developer being fully responsible, which is really the model that we've adopted by way of our conditions. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and Shelley can play Ben if I've missed anything.
Uh, Steve here, if we had decided to go with a work group, I guess I was on the last one four or five years ago when we worked on ordinance. I'd be willing to sit in on that work group.
I was actually just going to offer the same thing. I've done a lot of work on solar in the past. Having said that, I'm still not really sure what the point would be. Um, I, from what I understand from some of the planning commission members, there's a particular person on the planning commission that seems to be having a hard time with this. Um, I, you know, there's this whole thing about our ag land and diversification and property owners getting to make determinations of their land particularly that doesn't impact others. And we just talked noise, so that impact others. And the state has continued to do a lot of work on this. Um, I will find it hard to believe the state won't have a requirement if one doesn't currently exist. Um, so I'm just, I, I'm just struggling with what they would do. It sounded like Sherburne County spent a lot of money looking at the issue to, to say no to what was brought back to them. Um, so I'm not against it, I'm just not sure to what end we're going to make, make progress that isn't already ongoingly worked. I do, at the bare minimum, I would think we'd want to have, do the option to having those, um, financial changes, the guarantee, um, finalized. I guess that's a question.
Carol stated another way. What questions are we trying to answer? Would that summarize where you're at?
Yeah, right, that are, that would currently make a difference for what we're doing. You know, in the cop plan, I asked Angie about this yesterday. We didn't have anybody that through all of those meetings, through all of them, we should stop doing this. We have like, if you want to do it. Yes, there are subsidies out there that that's part of. We have a utility company that is, you know, looking at doing it. Normally we'd say, perhaps this is kind of a win-win-win. I, I get it, but yeah. So what are the questions that would make a difference with what we're, we're currently doing and that staff isn't doing already?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. Um, I think it's important to recognize that the state is working on coming up with some answers or at least understanding the questions. And until we have that information, having a work group at this point seems a little bit premature. So it's not that we're, um, not in favor of doing a work group when we have enough information. But right now, there isn't information for us to tell you about de, excuse me, decommissioning, uh, process. And where do all those materials go? And what's the expectation for those things? Um, and I think we've answered what we could answer at this point. Uh, but until we have further information from MPCA or other entities that are studying this, uh, which we are a part of, and that's why we've been so involved. We want to make sure we're on the cutting edge of it. So we do have staff involved. I don't know if we're right, uh, if we're ready at this moment to, to take on a work group. Um, and if we did, we would have to hire a consultant, um, because there would be a need to have additional, um, information coming from somewhere, um, that, that we don't have. So either we hire our consultants or we wait and participate in the process and then determine at the end of that process if we need to do something.
This be a case where no action is still progress? Uh, and this is one of the feeling I'm getting.
Lee, can I, uh, chime in too? You know, I think one of the maybe benefits that has occurred through the state is limiting these to one megawatt, which limits the area of a lot of these solar farms at this point because they're a lot smaller in nature. So I think some of that, what could be construed, maybe 20 years down the road, that could be a potential high expense is a little bit mitigated because you don't have, you know, like, is it Shisago County where they have the thousand acre one? You know, the, the smaller ones are, are a lot less intrusive, I guess I feel, versus the very large ones. You know, and the other thing coming down the pipe too is like Great River Energy, um, I think has announced that they should be like 95% carbon free and then within the next five years as they're, you know, decommissioning Coal Creek Station in North Dakota. So, you know, they're buying more wind because the price of these, you know, products are coming down. And, you know, there's also a large, uh, battery storage pilot project they're working on. So, uh, you know, solar and wind aren't going to go away. Um, and I, I guess, you know, I volunteered to be on the committee if we should need one. But I guess, you know, I don't have as much concern either. Cause, you know, something's going to happen down the road anyway, or something's going to be looked at.
Thank you, Steve. Um, anybody else want to chime in? Otherwise, uh, maybe, uh, from the discussion I've heard so far, uh, there's no compelling, uh, desire to move forward with our own, uh, solar work group. Uh, where, where are the rest of you at? Can we move on?
I, I don't know if we need to take immediate action on this or not. Um, you know, I think the whole thing is evolving. Um, obviously we've got some other, uh, research and information coming from the state. We can just as well take that, bring it, bring it back to us. Uh, uh, I, I don't necessarily think we need to, you know, put that commission together. Uh, Steve, by all means, if you want to stay on top of that, that would be great. I mean, just as, as somebody from the, uh, county keeping an eye on it as far as one of the commissioners, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I have a question from a staff standpoint. You've got alternatives. Would you like us to act on the direction of finalizing the changes to the financial guarantees? Or do you not need that? Is that just kind of out there? If you don't need that, I think, uh, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, what you were saying sometimes, you don't need to act right the second, we might in the future. So do we need, do you need us to do anything with the financial guarantee that you had listed or no?
Um, well, whatever we put together, you can bet, say, in about, uh, 2040, 2045, there'll be an equally clever group that will explain to whoever will listen that it's not their responsibility to, to decommission all these things. So, uh, I don't know, I think we're damned if we do and damned if we don't here.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Angie Berg.
To, to answer Commissioner, uh, Clark's question is, we don't need the board to make any decisions today related to the financial guarantees.
We actually did that on May 5th. Um, and we're, we're almost nearing completion of working with the attorney's office on that. So thank you for the question.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, if there's no further discussion or comments or perspectives on, uh, environmental services, uh, could we move on to next agenda item? Great, thank you, Angie, you done good. All right. Uh, let's see. We would like to hear from Aaron Tufti. Uh, Renee Frondes, you're available. Uh, take it away.
Good morning.
Yeah.
Aaron and I, um, have just a really short presentation for you. Um, I'll pull up, um, PowerPoint here. So just to give you an update on where COVID-19 is right now. Um, so we just have a few slides. This is actually the dashboard that's on the Stearns County website. Um, this is our, um, data from yesterday. We, um, update this every day. Um, but this is actually from our, um, briefing that we did yesterday. So Stearns County is at, um, uh, confirmed cases. Her average age is, uh, 37. Um, we have unfortunately seen 13 deaths. Um, the average age, um, of those individuals who did, um, pass away ours is 75. So, um, it's a, a older population. Um, this, uh, upper graph that you see there is the new confirmed cases per day. And I think I shared this before, you know, we really peaked in that, um, May period. And over the month of May have just gradually, um, decreased in our numbers. And we averaged somewhere around maybe 20, um, cases now, new cases per day. Um, and then of course, we put the cases by zip code on our, um, map as well. And we, as I said, update that regularly and it just shows again that we see disease across Stearns County. So we have, um, what I'm going to call, um, disease sort of at a lower level floating, um, in our community. Now, the only thing I caution is that this is what we know as far as people that have been tested. Um, and so those numbers may be larger, um, this is exactly what we know. Um, but then I'm going to turn this over to Aaron so she can, oops, I'm sorry, so she can talk about that dashboard.
Good morning, Aaron Tufti, the emergency manager. Um, if I can, Renee, I'd like to take a step back to the dashboard for just a second. Um, we received, um, an inquiry following the last board meeting about why some of the numbers on our website appear to be different than what's on the MDH website. Um, and just for a, a point of clarification, the information that we receive, um, is through a database with the Minnesota Department of Health. It is constantly being changed and updated with information throughout the day. Um, so what we see on the MDH website is more of a static display and that information is updated at 11 o'clock each day. So that is where we may see a little discrepancy in the numbers, just because ours is more of an active conversation with the Department of Health. Okay, thank you. Okay, so over the course of the last week or so, um, Renee and I have worked with members of the Emergency Operations Center and then leadership with both the county administration and human services to develop this EOC dashboard that really talks about, um, the life cycle of the Emergency Operations Center and our response to, um, COVID. Um, when you look in the center there, you can see our arrow is moving towards the right-hand side, um, and shutting down the EOC. Um, we are working right now on what we call a demobilization process that allows us to continue to have an active response to COVID in the community. Um, however, we are going to be doing more of this at a department level, um, and not so much at the EOC coordination level. So I'd like to take just a minute to walk around this, um, circle in this dashboard. And then, um, we can certainly take any questions you might have about where we're at in the process. Um, if you look at the very bottom, we talked about the framework. Um, we have the Disaster Response Action Team, a group of people, um, throughout the county that help us make decisions on about when we need to act and take that next step. Um, and we utilize our all hazard emergency plan, continuity of operations, isolation quarantine and points of distribution to really help guide those discussions as it relates to health emergencies and really any type of emergency we might experience. And we have meetings as needed or required. Um, and we work on building together the people that we need to, to make up the team to respond. Um, next, as we move to the left-hand side of the screen, um, we look at having the EOC fully functional. We have command and general staff meetings, um, we have operations briefings. Um, and we do daily correspondence with, um, members of our leadership team about what's happening. Um, and we do daily correspondence with, um, members of our leadership team about what's happening, um, with our response. Um, we see things like restrictions in place throughout the state. Um, we may have high case numbers like 70 or more or case complexity. Um, in the community, we have donation requests. We're receiving essential services, um, requests. We have hotline needs, um, to be able to respond to needs of the community. We're trying providing transportation coordination. We may be seeing crisis standards of care implemented for healthcare. Um, media is engaged not only locally, um, but throughout the state and possibly even nationally. Um, and we're really looking at kind of that state and local focus. Um, so that's when we are fully operational, some of the types of things that we might be seeing. Um, we certainly have experienced that over the last, um, few months. Um, it has been the majority of what we have done with our time in the EOC. Um, over the last couple of weeks, we've started to transition more towards the top of the circle here where it's a partial activation, where we're seeing numbers maybe be more steady. Um, we're not seeing the large spikes, um, any longer. And so we have started to scale back on some of the meetings that take place. We may be doing them twice weekly, for example, instead of every day. Um, we are seeing less restrictions in place. Um, our daily case counts are lower. Um, the needs for donations and hotline coordination, um, have started to come back to something that is more manageable on a one person or department basis. Um, we still are receiving essential services, um, and they do require that coordination, but maybe not as many as we saw before. Um, and the need for additional logistics support with things like transportation is starting to scale back as well. So as we then transitioned to the closure of the EOC, or maybe um, a better term might be where we're shifting the focus of where this management is taking place. Um, as we want to bring it back to the departmental level. Um, so as we've been working over the last couple of weeks, we have transitioned staff that were assigned to the Emergency Operations Center, um, back to, um, their department work. Um, some of them are still continuing to support COVID operations. Um, and will continue to do so for some time because we also understand with this virus, we don't know what the next steps will be. Um, if we'll continue to remain stable, if we might see an increase, um, in cases again, and we need to be flexible and prepared to, um, bring our response back into full operations if we need to. So Renee, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I just think that, um, particularly since I'm going to be stepping out. Um, we felt it was really important to sort of document and tried to be really clear on what those like tipping points are actually going to be. Um, so that moving forward, people, um, understand or know when, when do we maybe have to expand a little of what we're doing, um, or in this instance, um, contract. So. With that, um, we'll take any questions that the board may.
I have a question. Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate you on your retirement.
Thank you.
And then I do have some questions. The, the first one here is, uh, as I've seen several articles now that Minnesota's been placing COVID patients in nursing homes. And, um, this is kind of a personal motive here. I was in, in Minnesota. Percent of Minnesota deaths is about 81% which in nursing homes, which leads the nation. And I was wondering, have, and this is personal because I have, uh, relatives in the Stearns County nursing home. Have any COVID patients been placed in any Stearns County nursing homes? And if so, which ones?
Um, no, um, as far as we know, there have not been any that have been placed in a Stearns County nursing home. Uh, we have had cases in, uh, nursing homes, but none that have been placed. Um, what those nursing homes that have done this, and Erin, you can add in, um, is what they've done is created separate sections in their nursing home, if they can, um, that are strictly, um, for COVID patients. So they can put or move those individuals in there. The staff are separate from the others. So there is no crossover, um, in order, uh, for us to protect those other individuals that may not be infected in the other part of the nursing home. So there's, um, there's care, taken great care actually to separate them out. The, the needed, um, care that. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you just, oops, sorry.
Renee, you are correct. Information, um, that we have placed in a Stearns County long-term care facility.
Recognizing Commissioner Malcolm either is on or might be coming soon. Um, I just want to make sure my question doesn't get in the way, but for the public, could you just talk a little bit more again about process for testing, contract tracing, essential services? And then I know that there's been heightened interest in, uh, doing some of the, uh, wide scale availability like the Memorial Day weekend that wasn't done in our area, but because of how many cases we've had or how many people are just worried about their family members, or, um, I hear the, what if I am walking around and I've got it and I don't know? You know, I think you had set out a, or, or MDH has set up a statistic that 10 to 50% may be asymptomatic. Talk about that in terms of the possibility.
Sure. Um, so right now what's happening is testing is going on, um, within, um, it, it actually across Minnesota, across the country, but across Minnesota, um, basically.
I know what it's supposed to do.
That are symptomatic. Um, so individuals that are ill, you know, will, uh, get tested. Um, then, um, those individuals that are identified as positive get reported to the Minnesota Department of Health. Um, those are then, um, sent to us, um, and we in turn contact those individuals on the phone within 24 hours of being notified, um, by the state health department. Um, and then we go through with them, isolation and quarantine, um, requirements, uh, for them and any of their contacts. And then we also, um, will help with contact investigation or contact tracing. So if the person doesn't want to talk with someone that they may have exposed, we will assist them in doing that. And you are right, Commissioner Clark, there are about up to, I think it is 25% of about a quarter of all individuals who are infected don't know it. Uh, again, it's one of the reasons why we recommend masking both individual, um, that's out, um, as a way to potentially protect against those, um, individuals that may be asymptomatic. So if I'm going out in the public, I really should be wearing a mask so that in case I may be infected, I'm not infecting someone else, or at least reducing the risk of infecting someone else.
Mr. Chair, I do believe that we have Commissioner Malcolm here and we're trying to get Melissa in to introduce her.
We do, um, we do have testing that's going on primarily in the provider, um, arena. Um, but, um, there is now testing that is being done by Walmart. Um, and there is a way to be able to, um, do that. That will be posted on our website. I think they have also, um, done some work around identifying, um, how that gets done. Um, so there's a news release that will be, uh, sent out here just to highlight that. Um, and Erin and I have had conversations with the state EOC about getting on the list to, if they do any additional uh, testing out in our community, we would like to potentially offer that in the community. So.
And is the Walmart testing going to be free?
That's I bet. Testing is free. And it's like Wednesday, Friday, I think.
Of all the fine minds, could take a break. I'd like to turn this over to Melissa Huberty.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Melissa Huberty, Human Services Administrator. And there's only one board item on the Human Services Department today, and it's one of the most important. It's item F1 on page 359. And we want to take this time to acknowledge and thank Renee Fraundees for over 30 years of dedicated service to public health and Stearns County. And we're just totally honored to have Commissioner Jan Malcolm of the Minnesota Department of Health join us today to say a few words about Renee after all this service. And then after which I wanted to read a proclamation that we wrote in her honor.
Well, good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? I think I'm unmuted. Uh, can't seem to find the camera button, but maybe that's okay.
We can hear you.
Great. Good. Well, thank you so much for inviting me to be part of this, um, this honoring of Renee. Um, it's, uh, it's just, um, really bittersweet. Uh, you certainly deserve, um, deserve Renee to, uh, go on to the next chapter of your life after having given so much to public health over your 30 years. You've seen so much. I'm, I'm guessing that, uh, uh, what we've been through these last months probably wasn't on your list of, uh, of, of, of goals, uh, to, uh, to manage through a global pandemic. But thank you for what you've done, not only in these last months to bring clarity and leadership, uh, to your community, but what you've done for so many years. Um, your, your commitment to your community, to everyone in your community, the health equity, the health for all is just, um, stands really as a, uh, stands out as a real example of leadership in our community and our, in our family of public health. And I, I just so appreciate, um, what you have done also to be a champion for the state and local partnership. Um, to, uh, to, um, always be supportive of the idea of the partnership and never afraid to help us see what, what we need to do to build on it and make it better. Um, your professionalism, your, uh, calm, clear demeanor has just been, uh, so so very valued. And I, I don't have to tell you, but, um, certainly commissioners and, and staff, I, I think you know too. I hope you do the incredible respect that, uh, staff here at the state health department and local public health leaders around the state, um, hold Renee in as just, um, something Renee, I hope you will, you, you will always be proud of, and you should. Um, what you've given, uh, to, to this field is just tremendous. And you know, you've through, uh, through SHAC and all the different work groups, um, that we've had over the years. I, we can't, we've lost count of how much you've done, but you've never said no to a request to help that I can remember. Um, and making us, making us all, um, collectively a better public health system in Stearns and throughout the state. It's just been wonderful and, and we're really going to miss you. We're going to miss your knowledge, your history. Um, mostly just you, your kindness, your style. So, um, just deep congratulations and deep thanks to everything you've done. I know you're not going to go far.
No, thank you though.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malcolm, for those kind words. And I have a proclamation if you guys, if the, if the board would allow me to read the proclamation at this time. Um, and it states, whereas Renee Fraundees was hired on September 20th, 1988 and has over 30 years of dedicated service to Stearns County. And whereas Renee advanced to Community Health Services Administrator and has assisted neighboring counties with these duties for years of experience in local public health have made her one of the most respected public health officials in the state. And whereas Renee's strong skills and community engagement brought together diverse perspectives tonight to unite around priority issues in the community. Renee has leveraged the role as a neutral convenor to help government and the community think about prevention and early intervention for our most vulnerable population. And whereas under Renee's leadership, Stearns County became an early adopter of evidence-based family home visiting programs, supported statewide health improvement plan efforts, provided health services at the community outpost, offered HIV testing and outreach to those with unstable housing, and attained the breastfeeding-friendly health department gold status for Stearns County. And whereas Renee has been an important part of the Local Public Health Association, serving for many years on legislative committees, her skills and abilities helped lawmakers understand the role of public health. And whereas Renee spearheaded true grassroots initiatives in Stearns County over the years, including the Central Minnesota ACES Collaborative to address adverse childhood experiences and worked with the community to develop the community outpost to collaborate with residents, community groups, businesses, and St. Cloud State University to assess community needs and improve access to health and wellness services. Now therefore, we, the Stearns County Board of Commissioners, show appreciation and respect to Renee Fraundees for her commitment and contribution to the citizens of Stearns County and the state of Minnesota. And thank you for your most outstanding service. And with that, yeah, I will say Renee, it has been an honor and a privilege to work with you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. You know, um, I, uh, when I decided to retire, um, a little more than, well, not quite six months ago. Um, I didn't think it was going to be so hard to, to do, um, just with the hard work that's had to happen in the last three months. Um, I, I had a plan that I was going to get everything all wrapped up neatly for the next person. And, uh, so all I've been able to do is, um, I'll work really hard to try to keep us, um, as healthy as we possibly could these last several months. So. But what it did, um, actually do for me is, um, allowed me to get to know, um, even better the people that I worked with regularly. Um, and some new people, um, in our community that, um, had never had the opportunity to work with before. So. Um, and it actually is, uh, going to be a good peaceful, um, get, leave me with peace, I guess, or at peace as I step out. Um, there are lots and lots of good people at the state level, um, who will continue the partnership, Jan. And then also a lot of, a lot of excellent people at Stearns County who will, uh, continue to work really hard to keep, um, our community safe and healthy. And, um, I really, um, feel like I can step away now. Um, I did see a quote the other day and I wrote it, wrote it down. I wanted to, to share, um, it with you. Um, cause I thought it was a great one. It says, "We must accept the end of something in order to begin to build something new." And so I'm going to step away and allow, um, even bigger and better things to grow, um, both in Stearns County and in Minnesota. And I really appreciate, um, the honor today. Thank you very much. It's been a wonderful opportunity to serve the people of Stearns County. So thank you.
Congratulations, Renee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Um, here's what didn't happen, uh, that Marla and I had worked up. Uh, uh, when you had announced your initial retirement. What we were going to do is we noticed that the only vowel that's not present in your last name is O. And what we were going to do is give you a placard with an O on it so that you'd have all the vowels uh, in, in the alphabet, uh, with and without, uh, your last name. But, uh, I guess, uh, reserve the thought that we were going to give you an O. Uh, but things just didn't work out.
Oh, thank you. I will, I will sign my, a, a letter to you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, O Fraundees, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. St. Patrick's Day would be perfect.
Speak to the Irish heritage that my husband actually does have.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Renee, also just want to also thank you. It's amazing thinking about. I'm not sure I can go back 32 years and come up with all the things you were working on them, but I can go back 20, 25 years. And the number of ways helping, um, our county, our region, really thinking about how do we move to the next level? How do we really focus on prevention? I'll tap into my inner Dwayne Merrick, um, about how important it is for us to invest now, save money later, and particularly the lives. Um, and what you've done now, um, you and certainly Erin has been really helpful to us and to our residents. And yes, I'm kind of curious, we, we're going to have to figure out another celebration, maybe when we can actually be together. But, you know, do you have heartening thoughts or advice as we move forward? Because we are still in a challenging time. There's a lot to celebrate as perhaps some of us, um, are able to go back out and maybe have a beverage or a meal outside. But there's also a lot of strife going on right now. And, you know, it's just as we move forward, not to make it too heavy. Do you have advice for us?
Um, well, that's, I hadn't thought about that, but, um, I guess, um, just a couple of things. Um, one is, um, that, um, again, I think it's, uh, that you know that there are lots of good people that really have, um, the best intentions for the health of the people in Stearns County. Um, and, and truly, um, I think you guys are extremely blessed to have Erin, um, as your emergency manager. Um, and she and I have had this conversation many times, our ability to work together. And she and I have had this conversation many times, our ability to work together and to actually, I think, leverage both what emergency management does and what public health does in our community to make our response as effective, I think, as what it was. And there, it's not like it was perfect or that we didn't have issues. But I think, you know, both her skills and my skills really made a difference in our community. So, so just knowing that there are lots of good people that will continue this work within the county. I do think that, I appreciate the partnership that we do have with the Minnesota Department of Health. You know, there's responsibility at the local level. The board, it has lots of authorities around the health and the safety of their communities. And we share that responsibility with the Minnesota Department of Health, who really, truly, I think, you know, in, in how Minnesota has set up their public health system, have, have created that partnership in order for us to be able to meet the needs of our communities as best as we can, all the way down to the local level. All of the work that we do at the local level in public health is really done at the local level. And so you have lots of authorities at the local level to make these decisions. And I think that that's what makes our public health system in Minnesota so strong, the fact that the board does as, is as involved at our, with, with what's happening in our community. But also then we have this excellent partnership with the state health department and, and have a direct line to the commissioner at Shack every quarter, where if there's something going on, we can bring that to the commissioner. So, so I would say use those authorities, both locally and that partnership is, to leverage change in our community. And you know, I think this type of event highlights where we have issues in our community around equity. I think it's our opportunity to take advantage of addressing some of those issues. And you know, I know I'm retiring and stepping away from the best job I've ever had and a job I absolutely love. But I also do hope that I can continue to participate in making change happen at both the local level here in activities and then also at the state level to address the issues. So, so I'd say use your authorities, make sure you're maintaining that relationship, that partnership with the Minnesota Department of Health, and then just trust that you have great people working for you.
Okay, Renee, I have a dissertation of accolades as well, but I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll forego them and we'll do it when we're all together live, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I really would like to, I, I've shared with Melissa, when we can get together, I really would like to be able to say goodbye. There are a lot of people I haven't been able to say goodbye to. You know, you can imagine 30-plus years of work in a community. I've made a lot of connections and, and would like the opportunity to say goodbye to everybody. So, I'm hoping that'll happen here in the near future.
Thank you, Renee. And I guess that concludes our recognition presentation. It was overdue, but well, it certainly had merit. I guess we could move on to issues by commissioners. Let's go by district. District one, Cheryl, what do you have?
Well, you know, there is so much right now that probably could be said. I, probably like many in our region, am really saddened and horrified and yet look forward to what we can do to get past some of what has happened in the last week. I don't know how many of you saw, but Unite Cloud had actually put on a memorial on Friday night, and maybe a couple of you were also there, bringing flowers in a quick masked tribute to George Floyd. It was pretty amazing to see a real positive thing. So we have a number of our citizens who already were feeling economic stress, businesses as well. We're seeing sickness in their households, are seeing sickness in their households, and now we have this. And very thankful to live in a region, to be part of a county and county board that really tries to think about how are we moving forward together and for all people. I reached out to our business associations in the last few days, as well as to another number of businesses. And you know, they're still talking about in addition to being hurt economically, just how worried they are about being safe for their employees and safe for their customers. And so I personally appreciate the steps we've taken and the approach we've taken. But I guess that, you know, kind of in a big, big way, those, those are concerns, concerns, and then I guess in, in some way gladness that, that I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. District two?
Yeah, I, I too just want to echo a couple of Cheryl's sentiments. You know, it seems between the COVID-19 and, and the issues of the unrest, it's kind of a surreal time for us all. But I, I do want to commend maybe Central Minnesota on focusing on the injustice and, and not turning to violence. So I appreciate that. Obviously, we do have to address those issues of, of justice, and hopefully we can do that in an appropriate dialogue instead of making it violent where everyone's fearful. So that's a good thing. Also, I, I want to go back. I think we may have some unfinished business, and we'll let Dr. Willie take care of that because I think we were going to maybe move forward with perhaps the proposal to have an assessment on that property if we're going to move forward with the grant money. We, we have to have that, and I think that's due by the end of the month. So I don't know, Mike, is where we might be on that or where we have to be on that. Again, like I said, we don't want to write the check, but we have to at least get in line to put our hand out to get money from the state and federal government.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, the process here, if you remember, we talked about this a few months ago, and that we, we have this, that you approved the, the plan today, which is a step towards getting the regional commission to approve the plan, which is, which qualified, will, will allow us to qualify for legacy funds for that, for the park. And that, that doesn't just mean for the land acquisition, that means for improvements to the park all over the place. But, but if we do want to pursue that land acquisition with a legacy grant this year, we would, we would want to be moving quickly. And the only, the one step that I think that would be helpful there would be to get a couple of appraisals so we, we at least know what kind of a value we're dealing with. And that would get you to the point where you can say, yes, we're interested, or no, we're not interested. And if, if we don't do that now, I think, and Ben, Ben can chime in here too, if we don't do that now, you'd have another meeting later this month, this month, which would very much put time constraints on there. I don't know, I think we perhaps would be able to, excuse me, we perhaps would be able to still apply, but without knowing the amount would be pretty difficult. So Ben, maybe you want to add something to that too. And all this is if the board wants to pursue it.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. And yeah, just depending on how the timing lays out is the appraisals. I'm, I've talked to a couple of appraisers, take about four to six weeks to complete. The timing we're looking at, the board does decide that we do want to put in a legacy application for that property at the end of July, July 31st. So that doesn't give us a lot of time between now and, and then to complete this. And then it's all banks on also, you know, the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission accepting that master plan as well. There's a really tight timeframe here. The reason the push for the legacy funds is that that really is our best source to get potentially the amount of money that we may need to purchase that property. Most of the other grant sources, without combining, not saying we can't combine others to it, but just don't have the pots that this legacy program.
Okay, anything else? District three?
Yes, I would like to have us, for a letter of support for Shadys. I've had some calls from them, and, and they really felt that if they had had a letter of support from Stearns County, that the judgment of Judge Wang would have gone the opposite direction. And that, Stearns County was the only one that they were missing. And, and they have requested that I ask for a letter of support from Stearns County, similar to the ones that have been provided by some of the other entities, such as, as Coal Spring and so on. And then also, the other thing is, there have been, I think maybe we should look at, again, our real estate taxes with respect to these people that have pretty much been put out of business. Something that Coal Spring has done with the ones that they license, they have gone to licensing for those businesses for off, or for on sale only for $1 for their taxes for next year. And they've gone back and prorated the ones from last year. And so I think that's another thing we could consider. Also, Sherburne County is, is paying up to $1,000 a month to cover rental costs for these people that can only, or businesses that can only serve things outside. And for rental costs of tents and canopies and tables and chairs and all of those extra things that they'll be required to have. So that's another thing we could be looking at, and we could show at least the empathy that these other, other government entities are showing.
Anything else, Jeff?
Those are my two requests.
Okay. Let's see, oh, I'm district four. If Steve Amos has been paying, has been plugged into this meeting, I'd like to talk to him after the meeting about totally unrelated matter. District five, Steve, what do you got?
I guess what I would request is, can we have our next meeting in person? And maybe Dr. Willie's bringing that up, but I, I think, you know, I know Benton County has been meeting, and I'm not sure Sherburne, but I, I really think we need to show leadership and show that, you know, we're going to take that stuff.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Natch, I, I was going to bring that up. My suggestion was going to be that our next meeting be held very much like it is today. And then hopefully our meeting in, our meetings in July can become, become to be in person. But absolutely, and it's your board meeting, and if you have decided to meet in person, we would have to try to facilitate that so that we're doing it with the social distancing and all of that.
When is the next?
Our next meeting is June 20.
When is the governor squeak the door open again a little bit? June 12?
Yeah, I think the target, when we'll, when we'll hear some new, if anything new, and I hope there's new, would be the 12th of June, yes.
Well, how important is, how important really is the, the governor's statement anymore on this? When you look at the masses that were in the street, or maybe will continue to be in the street in the recent past, I think whatever damage is going to have been, was going to take place in the state has probably been done in terms of personal health. Should that be a consideration anymore?
Well, there is a very big difference between the risk indoors and outdoors, and I'm sure if Renee was on here, she would say it. I think if, I hope is that we, that the dial kind of keeps moving. But if we're going to be socially distanced, we will not be televised. We will be, have nice little pictures of ourselves far apart. And leadership actually is, in this case, I think, since the order still says to work remotely if you can. Having said that, I, I too hope that we might be able to by June. So I think that one of the things for us to consider is just the difference between the risk, not anything else, forget the order, just the risk between indoors and outdoors.
But nobody sees us anyway now, they only hear us.
They can all see us right now. They can all see us right now. We will, we won't be able, yeah, they can all see this. This is being streamed. This is, the public can see us. I actually don't know about you, I've gotten comments about our meetings.
Yeah, the meetings are streamed.
Video.
No, they're streamed right now. They can see us live. And Benton County doesn't do a visual, my understanding is, there so they can spread out a lot more. But St. Cloud, I know, isn't, they're not planning to for a bit. I don't know about others, but something for us to think about. I certainly will tell you, I miss seeing you all in person, but I did see my granddaughter too, and my kids, and there's a whole bunch of people.
But I don't know, you know, the only thing you got to fear sometimes is fear itself. And, and I, I mean, I'm okay with a couple other boards that, well, we decided we're going to start meeting in mid-June here in person, so. And I realize we're televised.
And a community leader yesterday told me that if she gets this, her husband will probably be, he's got pretty significant health issues, he'd be at risk. And she was surprised, she has a very close friend whose adult child is in the hospital on a ventilator. So on the one hand, we don't think there's any risk, and I'm not a fearful person.
I'm not saying there's no risk.
The orders, to go with the orders, the inside risk, it would seem prudent to at least wait one more meeting. That's all I'm saying. And, and the public can see us. Surprised they're not chatting with us more.
I'm kind of, I think lose something by not being in person. At least I feel we do.
Any other comments? Well, then, the events of the recent past, you can gather literally thousands of people as long as they're outside, but if they're inside, we have to maintain them six feet. This is really getting confusing. The, I don't have anything else. If you don't have anything else, folks, I guess we could adjourn.
Were, were we going to take action on that proposal for the appraisal?
If Ben can take it out of his budget that he's got now versus new money, I would be okay with it.
Actually, we're going to use the, go ahead, Ben. I see you there.
Yeah, commissioners, yes, we would propose using some of the Parkland Dedication Funds, and if we can't cover it all with that, then yes, certainly I can find it out of my budget if need be.
And I'm okay with it too. It can come out of the budget.
Anything else?
Just Lee, you got a little bit of background with that. You, you should have a feel for appraisal, so just keep your eye on it, okay?
Board wants to authorize the use of the Parkland Dedication Fund for that, then it would be nice to have a motion to give us that.
How much is in there?
All right, do we have such a motion? Or do you need it now, or do you need it the next meeting? What's your, what's your plan here, gang?
I think I'm hearing you say we need it now, is that correct? And then Steve was asking how much is in the fund. I'd like to know that too.
Right. Right now, the, there's about $52,000 in the county wide that can be spent by the county, so.
I'm sorry, how much?
Five to $52,000.
Okay.
Now, we are, we are taking a little bit of that to pay for the master as well, so.
All right. Does that, does that take action? Doesn't sound like it. Sounds like the money's there. What you, what you read on it, Dr. Willie?
I would have thought that we would have action to move with this.
So I'll move that we could take money out of that fund that I just forgot the whole name of.
Parkland Dedication.
Derek Parkland Dedication Fund for the purpose of an appraisal. So I'll move that we could take money out of that fund that I just forgot the whole name of.
Parkland Dedication.
There is Parkland Dedication Fund for the purpose of an appraisal.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
District 1, District 2, District 3?
Go along with my previous, although I have to say name.
All right, District 4? Aye. District 5?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we got that done, the, I don't have anything else. So I guess a motion to adjourn would be appropriate? Or else I'll just say we're adjourned. Yeah, I got some.
There you go.
We're adjourned gang, thank you.
Bye everybody.
Bye.